...to the specifications of the DPW, set improvements being deemed by the Department of Public Works as suitable for submittal to town meeting for consideration of acceptance as a town way. And lastly, the owner applicant should continue to discuss providing additional improvements to the Shallow Pond Estates infrastructure. So those were the three recommendations that came out of the planning board. So we met with the DPW, the fire department, had a number of conversations. This, I'm, I just am gonna flash up on the screen, this is something we prepared for the fire department that runs through each phase of construction for the entire community and lays out which roads will be paved, which roads will be emergency access drives for phases one, two, three, four, five, and six. So I can go through those in some more detail, but these were presented to the fire department and the fire department issued, responded with a letter saying that their issues have been, all their issues have been addressed. But I wanted to show that this is part of the record and is also specifically referenced in our comments on the decision that we gave to you. So, but I wasn't sure whether you had seen that yet or not.
Can, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I was reading in one of the, in the fire department's report, in one place where they talked about booster pumps for some of the units. Can you show me on there where that, what units they were talking about?
So, this, um, this is a restatement of a comment that was in the Apex letter when they studied the water department. So let me answer your question first and I'll give you some context. So essentially, they were talking about, we might need booster pumps in some units at the highest part of the site.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And that highest part of the site is kind of around here and a little bit over here. The context for that, though, was that the case in which we might need booster pumps is on the highest demand day of the entire year, and it would also require that the water department change the way that they operate the tanks in town. So as opposed to keeping them at certain levels that they've established, there would have to be a policy or practice change that they would run the tanks at a lower elevation. This also assumes that one of the wells is offline. The largest well is offline, not contributing to the system. So it's a really small circumstance where we might need booster pumps, and what would happen if we didn't have booster pumps is people would have weak showers. There would always be sufficient water for, and for fire protection. So that was, so I wanted to provide a little bit of context on that, but that, all that language comes from the reports from Apex on the water system.
Good, thank you.
So, um, the other aspect of the discussions with the fire department, and this comment came up in both the fire department letter and the DPW, was the spacing of the hydrants. So we provided this plan to the fire department, which they blessed. So those were kind of the two main issues with the, with the fire department. Again, they, uh, their final sentence was, "All the Plymouth Fire Department concerns have been addressed." So the DPW also issued a second round of comments. Um, so there are a number of items that are still listed as to be addressed prior to construction. So this, in our experience, is a normal course of business where you go, you get your ZBA or your planning board permits, and then there are more details that need to get worked out with engineering. So some of these are, you know, using ductile iron pipe, which we've already agreed to do, providing ASBILs, providing reports of erosion control as we go, making sure the, uh, the sidewalks are ADA compliant. That, that's kind of for context, the, the items that are listed in the DPW, DPW letter as to be addressed prior to construction. We also met with the DPW and also had conversations with the water department regarding Kathleen Drive. So we went in seeking, um, uh, input as to their priorities in terms of, if we have X dollars to spend, what's the best way to spend them to move these roads forward and closer to road acceptance? So we had a, you know, uh, they would, they would characterize these as very hypothetical conversations, no formal commitments and, and the like, but they wanted to have milling of the roadways prior to just putting the two inches of paving down. They also talked about making walkways ADA compliant, providing survey of the, of the road and also for the road once we do our work. And, uh, those were really the, the primary areas of concern. So, um, they of course wanted us to do as much as possible in terms of addressing Donna and addressing Andrews, but frankly, there's just not the budget to address areas beyond Kathleen Drive. So, we weren't able to commit to, again, a scope that was broader than Kathleen Drive, but within our, uh, comments on the draft decision, we are able to put something specific forth, a specific scope that moves those roads closer to being able to be accepted. So, this, this proposal includes milling of Kathleen Drive, which was not previously included in any of the previous cost estimates or surety, putting the two inches of paving down, which has always been a part of our commitments, adjustments of rebuilding all the drainage rims and the risers, et cetera. There's a couple of areas of Kathleen Drive that have settled substantially and ponded, so we'll have to, uh, we're likely to rip out all the pavement in that, in those areas and have to re-grade it so that it pitches properly. One area in particular is the intersection of Kathleen and Andrews, the Andrews loops, so the eastern intersection, which is kind of halfway down Kathleen Drive and one of the major bus stops there as well. Let's see, uh, insulation of concrete handicap ramps wherever the sidewalks cross the roadways with the detectable warnings, and, uh, as I mentioned, survey over the entire road. About an hour and a half ago, I did receive a survey that does, does exist. It wasn't at planning, it wasn't at the water department, but engineering did, was able to, uh, to find a, an ASBIL plan that has a lot of the information that, um, we would need to create the ASBIL survey. It's from 1997, so it needs to be, you know, of course verified, and it lacks information kind of on the Kathleen Drive cul-de-sac and doesn't have any surface topography on it. So there's some additional information that needs to be provided, but it provides a lot, so that's, that's very helpful. So based on getting two competitive bids on the Kathleen Drive work plus some money for, for the survey, and if we had a 20% contingency on it, which is what Beals and Thomas, the peer reviewing engineer for roads recommends, we would be just shy of $500,000 in costs. So, as you may recall, originally, we put $450,000 on the table as funds that we would give to Shallow Pond to distribute as they saw fit. But given that there, um, is no appetite and is no entity to receive those funds for Shallow Pond, and also at the previous meeting here, uh, I would say the town expressed no interest in holding those funds and allocating them, um, as time progresses. So we are kind of down to Thorndike actually doing the work. So we would do this, we are committing to do this scope of work, you know, as defined here, and we're assuming all the risk associated with price fluctuations, you know, inflation, and, uh, but we feel that this is the best use of the available funds, and it doesn't include any cost related to Thorndike's time. So everything, we're not putting in management cost or overhead or profit or anything like that there. So that's what we've been able to put on the table, and we feel like this is an appropriate commitment to mitigate our request, which is to expand the project by 32 homes. And with that, I think I'll, we'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Questions for board members? Do you have the one?
So you have this memo that we just got from the DPW about the streets?
I don't believe, if it came in today, no.
Four, 409 today.
I do, I do not have that, but I did have a conversation with Bill probably an hour before that, so.
Okay. Oh, it says that, "I've had a conversation with you at 3:00 PM this afternoon." Okay. And they suggest all three streets?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So in other words, there'd be no agreement with the Shallow Pond Estates we'd have to worry about in this?
Uh, no, our commitment would be reflected in the condition as part of this permit. There wouldn't be any separate side agreements.
Right.
It would basically, you, we would be seeking to modify, I think it might be condition 12, um, that currently states we're required to put the two inches of pavement on, on Kathleen Drive to what, as we have, as we have edited it there and the scope that I just laid out.
Okay. And then the, I noticed, um, one of your other slides, when I was going through this, um, you're gonna put a turnaround up on Phase Three, so we won't be using Andrew to the last 14 houses, I guess?
No, that's, that might be misleading. So this, um, uh, so this plan, you're, I think you're referring to this green circle right here. So this is a phase by phase plan. Let me just, I'll back up just for clarity. So, uh, currently, this is Phase 2A where we're building. I'm sorry. So this is Phase 2A where we're building, and we have an agreement as part of our permits from last year that this green swath is what we will make as an emergency access way.
Right.
So on these plans, green is emergency access, yellow is actually paved. So this is where we're starting with, with Phase 2A. This would be kind of the completion of phased, or completion of this loop, so we would have to provide this as emergency access before getting our first occupancy within Phase Two. So I'll fast forward to this. So in this scenario, uh, we would have to provide a turnaround here in order to get occupancy on any of these buildings here, but we are still building this whole exit.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is our last phase right here, where we show this as all being paved.
So what I'm saying is, okay, so at Phase Three.
Yep.
Phase Four is where the road's not gonna be in, you put the turnaround in to keep the traffic off of Andrew's Way.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the turnaround is for the emergency equipment. That was requested by the fire department.
And it, and it basically keeps you out, 'cause that's one of my basic concerns, where we're only gonna fix Kathleen Drive, that we're not gonna use the, um, Andrew's Way and Donna's to get out the other way.
And, and to your point, um, so this will be built prior to the first occupancy in this street. So there will be a number of buildings in this last phase that were all, all be in some stage of construction. So really, it's halfway in, halfway into Phase Four that there would be a single construction truck using that second means of, of access. So all the, all the heavy equipment associated with bringing in the sheet rock and the lumber and that sort of thing would be using Kathleen Drive.
Okay, 'cause that's one of my main concerns, if that's one we're gonna repave and, and do all, I definitely don't wanna see the traffic on and out the other way and, you know?
No.
'Cause those roads, what, probably 30 years, 20, I don't know, one time.
Thirty, thirty.
Yeah, late 80s, early 90s, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, but right now, if I get some other stuff, I'm gonna deal with that.
Sure.
At this point, do you have anything else you'd like to add, ready?
Nope, nope, really, that's, uh, that's the update, rather than, you know, replaying the tape from the previous presentation. Those are the things that are new information for the board.
Okay, at this point, the last time we were here, I left public comment open, and so I am going to continue public comment. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Who would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Jocelyn, you have three minutes, sir.
There's supposed to be a laser pointer here. Members of the CBI, I recognize I only have a three-minute soundbite, so I'll be brief. Here is a situation as it relates to the comprehensive permit. The town, in cooperation with Thorndike Development, is carving out of a heavily forested area a high-density FOTB with sole access via a private way. The project will expand the number of units from 200 to 232, push more units closer to the town forests, increase the density of some units from duplex to triplex units with heights of slightly under 40 feet, and it will now include a swimming pool and half basketball court. At the same time, the residents of Shallow Pond Estates are required at no incremental cost to this FOTB to provide public vehicular access along their private individually-owned ways, pedestrian access to state road, and must distribute water and fire suppression via the hydrants to this subdivision. The imposed access requirements and utilities are well beyond the intended consequence of the easement when the dormant estate was zoned R100, thereby limiting the number of dwellings to between 15 and 20. I think I have it right. This permit and the conduct under which it was created now being reheared is terribly flawed, as evidenced in the last 20 years. We're now on our third developer, and there'll probably be more if we don't reconcile our In closing, if you look back at any of my comments despite being cut off, I have not objected to the final objection, finalization rather, of this project, and I and others believe Thorndike Development is well-intended and competent. The concerns of the residents of Shallow Pond Estates as well as the fire suppression, water supply issues, which I've noted in letters to the fire chief and the town engineer, which has not been brought up at this meeting, have not been resolved. Therefore, tomorrow night at the select board meeting, I shall request that they seek an alternative process to reconcile this dilemma. I am optimistic a solution can be reached in the near term. Now, I've asked, I don't know how to work this thing, so forgive me.
You've got 30 seconds.
Well, there's the FOTB, and surrounding it is the town forest, and at the southeastern corner of there, the town gave up what was known as the Briggs Well with a 10-inch waterline connecting to a public waterline that would have bounded the perimeter of this. And that should be taken into consideration that the only access in and out of this subdivision is gonna be along Kathleen Drive.
Mr. Joseph, your time is up.
And given the fires, the Dallas State and other places, fire suppression is a seriously important issue. Three minutes.
Someone else? Mr. Kelly, do you, would you?
My name is John Kelly. I'm the, I live on 61 Shallow Pond Lane. I'm the president of the Voluntary Homeowners Association. Interesting, this is the first time the word booster pump has ever been used, probably won't be the last. Um, I'd like to quickly set the record straight on a few times that the owner of Thorndike has said that the residents of Shallow Pond Estates have sat around for the last 20 or 30 years and have done nothing about a problem with water mains. That, that is incorrect. For the last 20 or 30 years, I've been, I've been the resident for a little over 20 years, nothing in our documents when we purchased our homes said anything about us living on unapproved roads. When it snowed in the wintertime, we looked out the winter, winter window and we saw town plows plowing our roads. In the springtime, when there were potholes, we saw the town trucks filling the potholes and fixing the potholes. In seven, six or seven years ago, there was a water main break on Barber's Way, and they called the town, the town came out and fixed it. So there was no reason for anyone to, to think that this was any, our roads were anything other than town roads. Now, in the last year or so, since I've become, in the last couple of years since I've become the president of the HOA, we started looking into some, the history of Shallow Pond Estates. We found out that the town really dropped the ball in Shallow Pond Estates, and we made it, I made an appointment with the director of the DPW. During our meeting, I asked him directly, and this is the first time the question has apparently been asked in Shallow Pond Estates, if there was a water main break in Shallow Pond Estates, would the town fix it? And he gave us a direct answer, and that answer was no, and that's when we put a group together to figure out what we need to do to go forward. So I, I would ask him to please stop accusing us of sitting around for the last 20 or 30 years and doing nothing. The second issue that I have is in this modification that Thorndike is asking to the comprehensive permit. They are changing an agreement that we agreed to. The issuance now is the issuance of the final occupancy permit. We had made an agreement that at 75%, the work on Kathleen Drive was going to be done. That's a major change. I don't know why now we're going to the, uh, the issuance of the final occupancy permit. I think that's a, that's a major change that we, nothing has been discussed with us, the residents of Shallow Pond Estates, since this last CBA meeting, by the way. That's a, that's a major change that I don't think that the residents of Shallow Pond Estate would agree, would agree to. Another thing that we had a discussion with the people from Thorndike, and we talked about the major issue that was brought up tonight by Thorndike, and that's the area of Kathleen Drive and Andrew's Way. That area is a disaster. It's, every time it rains, it's a-
Mr. Kelly, your time is up.
Can I, can I ask for just, I got just two more-
I'll give you another, one more minute.
Uh, that ask, we discussed that issue, and I didn't ask Thorndike to do, make any repairs, but they volunteered to make repairs, and I asked what kind of timeframe that, that would be, and he said, "Weather permitting." So I notified the people in that area, and now it sounds like that's, that's changed. I'm, I wanna find out if that has changed, 'cause now I need to notify the people that that isn't. And the third thing I would ask is, during the time that all this work is gonna be done on Kathleen Drive, I think the biggest expense of doing repairs would be, would try, bringing the manpower out, having the trucks in the asphalt. Could, during that time of the repairs or at the end of the repairs, could they take their trucks and drive over to Donna Drive and at least repair any potholes at the time and repair some of the bad areas? Please, please consider that.
Thank you. Someone else? Seeing, yes ma'am, please. Your name?
Thank you. Mary Ellen Meadows, 41 Donna Drive. So I live on Donna Drive, obviously, and there are several potholes, and I would really appreciate it if Thorndike would step up to the plate themselves and fix some of those potholes, especially with the, um, traffic that is gonna be, um, in our neighborhoods after this whole, um, project is complete. I am concerned about, you know, additional traffic. There are a lot, several children, um, now on Donna Drive, as people are moving out, more children are moving in. And I, um, last time I was here, I didn't appreciate the comment that Shallow Pond could, should get their act together. I didn't find that very respectful. I am a member of the homeowners association, and it is not a mandatory homeowners association. People volunteer their time. Thank you, John Kelly, for all your work, um, I, and I appreciate the work of everyone on the board, and I also appreciate the work of all of you here, and thank you for considering.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Michael Hertz, 18 Penny Wayne, Shallow Pond Estates. I just wanna point out a couple of things, um, about what Thorndike is proposing tonight and how that may differ a bit from what Mr. Geisinger proposed at the last CBA meeting. Much of what they're saying tonight is similar, but, um, Mr. Geisinger did mention that they would inspect the entire water main and make whatever repairs the DPW felt were necessary, and that they would be willing to provide the technical support to assist Shallow Pond in making, um, the application and doing whatever engineering is required, uh, so a complete package relative to Kathleen Drive, um, as far as presenting our roads, that, at least that road to be accepted by the town. So I don't see anything in their, their proposal this evening that mentions inspecting the water main or providing assistance to the residents of Shallow Pond. So, you know, where do we stand with that? I think one other thing I would like to bring up, and that, back in 2005, the DPW sent a memo to the zoning board, um, comments on comprehensive permit application, and one of the things they mentioned was the infrastructure of the subdivision roads, namely Kathleen Drive, Donna Drive, and Talia Way. I don't know why Talia Way's included in here. It's not part of our Shallow Pond Estates, but it is connected to Andrew. Maybe there was some confusion with Talia and Andrew, but, um, within the vicinity of the proposed development will need to be improved as part of this project. So that was a DPW recommendation 20 years ago, um, and we're still fighting over improvements, particularly to Donna Drive. We appreciate the commitment you're making to Kathleen, would like to push that a little bit more in, in terms of what you've already told us a month ago, um, and would still, you know, would like to certainly see something for Donna Drive, which is, uh, not in very good shape and is gonna be facing a lot more traffic in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back for board discussion along with our attorney, inspection services. Mr. Geisinger, would you like to answer any, or, either one of you?
Yes.
Would you like to comment on anything you've heard?
Certainly. So, two kind of overview comments in terms of previous commitments and current commitments. This has been a dynamic process. Many of our meetings, particularly, you know, last, last time we were in front of you, the man of it advisory committee, a lot of ideas were put forth for really kind of a brainstorming session. So we don't intend to give something and then take it away, but we have had multiple conversations with the Department of Public Works, and we're trying to address some of their concerns and priorities as well. So that's just kind of a, a general comment. But in terms of some of the specific items mentioned by Mr. Kelly, in terms of the timing of doing Kathleen Drive, yes, there was a whole process that was, a whole survey that was conducted by the Shallow Pond residents, and the recommended timing for doing the, for repaving Kathleen Drive was around 75% through the, the community. So we're willing to go back to something very similar to that, to tie it to Phase Four. So prior to, to the first occupancy within Phase Four, we would agree to complete the pavement, a paving of Kathleen- a paving of Kathleen Drive, and that is at 78% in terms of, by unit count. So very similar, and there's a number of other things that are tied to phases, so I think that just makes a little bit more sense. In terms of that intersection that I mentioned and Mr. Kelly mentioned, we can accelerate that work and committed to repairing that intersection by the end of this calendar year. We recognize that all of our future customers are driving through that area, and when it rains, there is some substantial puddling, and it's also, again, it's a, it's a bus stop. So it's kind of an important, important intersection. So we're willing to accelerate that work to do it in calendar year 2025. In terms of the pothole repair on Donna Drive, so currently the town does some level of pothole repair, and you may know more than, than I do, but it seems driven by the fact that they are, the town is sending their vehicles down Donna Drive, be it the plows, be it the school buses, be it emergency responders. So I am fine, this is a little bit of a ill-defined or vague, vague commitment, but if there are potholes out there while we are doing the Kathleen Drive work, we're willing to throw some pavement in there and, and kind of smooth those out. But I don't want the town to just say, oh, well, Thorndike's going to do it in a few years, we're going to stop doing anything. So as long as things continue as they have been, we're fine doing a little extra work while we're out there with, with all that hot tub. Let's see, I think the only other comment that I wanted to address is, you know, I want to apologize if we gave the impression that, you know, Shallow Pond, it's, it's their fault, the roads are in the state that they are. You know, our comment is really more along the lines of, it's not all our fault that they are in the state that they are, that there's been problems that have existed for, for decades. And we've come along at this time, and we're trying to, to do our part to remedy some of the past problems, but we can't do, can't do everything. Those are my responses.
Okay. Before we go in further, I would ask our attorney, have you anything you would like to add to this right at the moment? Okay. And you shaking your head no?
We, we did have some internal staff meetings to talk about the situation focused obviously on the road issues, and so I think the iteration of the last report from Department of Public Works is concise in where we're at internally. That's it.
So I'm not sure, I guess, I'm not sure which one of you is going to direct this to, but the, the homeowners association, the one you're setting up for Tri-Potay or whatever there, when is that, when will that be done? At what stage?
Sure. So there's four different components of it. There's a, an existing association for the existing residents at Sawmill. So that association is established. There is a group of trustees that are running it. So that's, that's all, all set. The equivalent association for Alden's Reach, all those, all those documents are drafted, but it doesn't formally come into existence until right before our first closing. So none of those documents have been recorded yet. There's an HOA that sits above both of those that manages all of the roadways, all of the infrastructure essentially, and that entity has been established and is in place. So there is an entity that is there to manage the maintenance of all the roads and in perpetuity. So there's also a wastewater treatment plant entity as well that focuses just on the management of that, and that has been established, and authority has been transferred from the previous developer to that entity already. So the only one that hasn't been formally recorded is the one for Alden's Reach, and it's because there are no occupants yet. Yeah, oh yeah, and we're about a month away.
Okay, and the reason I say that is, we could pass this, but would you mind coming back informally to show us that agreement? I'd like to see.
You know, whether they mind, it's whether we want them to.
Well, we wanted to do it, but, you know.
I don't care whether they mind.
I don't care at what point, it would be at what point you're established in the final HOA.
Yeah. The, the HOA that I believe you would be most concerned about is the, the HOA that manages all of the infrastructure.
Right, exactly.
And that, that exists, the documents are on record. So they're, they're at the registry of deeds already. But we'll be glad to forward you a copy. That was actually one of the comments from the DPW, that they'd like to see a copy of that as well.
Yeah, because I mean, it just sets, mainly concerns me the most. I mean, again, is shallow, sort of associations from, I mean, fault, Shallow Pond get to where they are, but I understand it because associations don't, you know, work out that well usually. So, okay. I'll let somebody else. So, well, let me ask you, you want to add that?
I'd like to, I'd like to have you come back just informally, I mean, afterwards to show us that document. I mean, I'd kind of like to see that, to see that, you know.
If you're able to vote tonight, I have no problem coming back in the future.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yep, yep. No, absolutely, we can, we can walk through, I'll give you a brief summary and kind of show you how the responsibilities tie out to the matters of concern for the town.
I mean, that's, that's something that's going to affect everybody.
All of our, all of the condo associations that we've established, you know, over the past two decades are vibrant and still in existence.
I am wondering about the conditions on this. I'm looking at the conditions that we had from our last meeting, and now I'm trying to compare them with a draft, and you, you did this draft, you folks?
Mr. Chairman, we received a draft from Lee Hartman, and he asked us to comment on it more with respect to getting the, the facts right in terms of unit counts and, and the various elements, which we did. So we have commented on the draft, but the draft originated with the town.
Carolyn, have you seen this?
The last one I saw, I don't know if it's the same draft you have, Mr. Chairman, but it's dated February 24th.
I've got it, it's 213. That's. I just wonder what we're working on here. That's what we're doing. This is 213. So I assume that when it's, the draft, my draft, is, is final state of the, the vote. They both say draft, Donna. That came in this package, they go say draft, Donna, and they're both 313.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this, it's still a draft. I mean, this is ultimately this board's decision. So if this draft doesn't contain some conditions that you've discussed this evening or that you want to add to it or even modify some of these conditions, you are still at liberty to do so.
Okay. Okay, so let's go through these conditions. And we will use the draft at 313.
Yes, yes, sir.
If it's helpful, I could kind of run through our comments, or if you'd just like to read them and digest, either way.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I'm looking at the version that's got a 313, 25 date at the, at the top. So this was submitted last Thursday. And so the first, the first red line under submittals just updates the plan date. On the second page, there's a number of references to additional documents that have been, that have been submitted, and I ran through those earlier this evening in the presentation. Similarly, there have been additional advisory reports that have been received. So this is all really just, let's say, keeping up with the record. Under Section Three, Item A, there was a previous, the previous version kind of mixed up, the number of units within Phases Two and, Two through Four with a number of units in the entire community. So this was purely just for clarification, to say that Phases Two and Four contain 172 units and 420 bedrooms. So that was really just for clarification. Item 3G, we have proposed certain traffic calming measures on Kathleen Drive. We still remain committed to doing those, raised crosswalks, signage. We just need to make sure we get approval from the Department of Public Works. We had, for example, I think I mentioned, we had proposed stop signs, but they did not want us to install stops, stop signs as a speed mitigation measure. So we just put, as long as they're okay with the DPW, we will do them. The next one, under H. So this, this is no longer really relevant. This delineates our original proposal of giving $450,000 in cash, and that has been, you know, the, this section says what our submittal is as opposed to what the current conditions are. So I don't, I don't think that that's, that's no longer relevant. Sorry.
Let me ask you a question about that.
Somewhere in my notes I was reading earlier today from the last meeting, you said $450,000 plus an additional 150. I, I wrote down. I don't know why I wrote that, because I didn't continue the note.
We said that the original commitment was approximately $300,000 to do the repaving of Kathleen Drive, and so we were giving an additional $150,000 to get to the 450.
Okay. So what if it costs 500?
Which we think it might. We own the scope. So we own the risk of future price changes, inflation, any volatility.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna, if, if you would, I'm going to skip down to Section Six, which is the conditions. That's kind of the meat, the meat of the matter. So in Section Six, Three, this is really a clarification. When we initially made a submittal, we said that there would be $110,000 for each phase as a payment in lieu to offset the fact that an affordable unit is not being constructed. And so we were off by a factor of three, and this is just correcting those, those amounts. So that the total is 990,000 that's due, and 330,000 we do prior to the first occupancy in each phase. So condition four, so that's really the heart of the matter in terms of our commitments on, within Shallow Pond and specifically Kathleen Drive. So we've covered four, one extensively. We would be modifying that portion or adding a couple other bullets there to address the three items that I mentioned verbally earlier. So namely, accelerating the repair of that intersection, the potholes in Donna Drive, and there was one other one. My notes.
ADA compliant, Graham?
What's that?
ADA compliant?
Oh, yeah. No, that was an additional one that we were doing. Yeah. Oh, yes, it was the Phase Four.
Yeah, the 75%.
So committing to do all of Kathleen Drive prior to the first occupancy within Phase Four. So for clarity, let me repeat. We will commit to repairing and addressing the drainage issues at the intersection of Kathleen Drive and the easterly portion of Andrews Way in the calendar year 2025. When we are in progress with repaving Kathleen Drive, we'll address potholes in Donna Drive, and we will commit to doing the paving and associated work of Kathleen Drive prior to the first occupancy within Phase Four.
Phase Four, so we can, that condition will, will reflect that change now?
Yeah.
Because the one in the end, it just gives December 31st.
Yeah, or the, or the final occupancy. So we would commit to the earlier of December 31st or the first occupancy within Phase Four.
Okay. All right, so that'll become.
And, and frankly, we're going to try to do it as early as possible. It's important to.
Well, you don't want to lose money either.
It's important to, you know, our, our marketing to have that road, you know, look good. So it may, it may be accelerated, but we'll, we'll coordinate, coordinate that as we have with, with Shallow Pond. Let's see here. Five is again, just kind of clarification about the payment in lieu. And then the last one is, should be number eight as opposed to number three or seven. But essentially, the applicant shall modify the plans as required to satisfy the Department of Public Works comments, and the, the date is blank, but that should be, Mr. Management Report, Advisory Report, March 5th, 2025. And those are the modifications.
And it's up to the board, do we want to add, to see the, in a informal, the HOA?
Yes.
I think we should.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. We do indeed. Did you get the change on the roads? Yes. Yes, please.
One of the things I think I would suggest, just incorporating into the conditions, Mr. Chair, is that if you go back to procedural history, Paragraph Three, A through M, with H now removed, we should also identify that we are agreeing to those specific modifications, that it isn't just the conditions that we're imposing, but we're also agreeing that the plan can be modified as shown in that Paragraph, you know, procedural history section, Paragraph Three, because that's where we get to the increase in number of units or changes in the internal driveways, et cetera.
Will you break that?
I can do that in a draft, yes. I can do that in a draft, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Just for clarification, Carolyn, I'm not quite sure the thrust of what you said. Did you say that what's listed in three in the procedural history, which is three A through...
Can you speak up a little?
Which is three A through H? Some of those, you know, basically that was a recitation of what had been asked for. So some of it is being modified. I just didn't want to get crossed up.
No, I realize that, but when, we're focusing now on conditions as to, you know, what Thorndike is going to be obligated to do. We also need to mention what exactly it is the ZBA is approving here. And not, I realize not everything in paragraph three is a modification, but we need to make it clear that this board is approving that.
But I mean, for example, H, H talks about the money on Kathleen...
Which has to be stricken.
Okay, yeah, sorry that I was being more simplistic, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
No, it's just that when we then go into the decision portion, you know, we're, we're saying we're agreeing to modify, but we're not saying how we're agreeing to modify. And I want that clarified.
Did you get that, Denise? Good girl. All right, gentlemen. Is there anything else? I await the board's play. Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve case number thirty-two eighty-four, the modification to the comprehensive permit. With the added conditions. We added a condition to have them come back in an informal hearing with the HOAs? The complete HOA documentation.
Do, do we need to include the three bullets that he agreed to prior that aren't in this agreement? The intersection repairs, the Donna potholes?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the paving prior to the first, the occupancy in phase four?
You know, that would be the change to instead of December thirtieth, thirty-first.
And that would be in four, four I?
Right. At the start, what'd you say?
Prior to the first occupancy, yeah. Was that prior to the first occupancy in phase four?
We'll complete the paving of Kathleen Drive prior to the first occupancy in phase four.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Before we take this vote, I would ask our attorney, are we forgetting anything? Are you comfortable with what we need to do? Very good. With that said, I ask the board, are those in favor? It is unanimous. We may move forward. Thank you. We're gonna take about a five-minute recess here. And then next one is case thirty-one eighty-two, open gov, Nordstrom's Rack at Colony Place. Do you have?
There isn't one. It's, it's informal.
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jason Yakobucci with RGB Architects. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, DLC Management, for Colony Place, Nordstrom's Rack. We're here for special use permit that's on the, on the existing retail center. Basically to infill the last piece of the, the main in-line that was originally designed into the project but was never constructed. So there was a gap left. There's an Aldi on one end and mattress firm. Lazy boy, I get that one every time. And so there's existing, it's just an existing open, open space right now. So we're looking to fill, infill that with a twenty-seven thousand square foot Nordstrom's Rack. Let's see if I can get that works. Yeah. So it's basically, it's an infill box from building to building, taking up the existing pad that's already there, that's been pre-graded also for a loading dock off the back. All of these units all have loading docks. We'll be continuing with the same thing off the back ring road of the, of the complex. You can see here, this is, this is the open spot that's there. And you can see that there's the existing tactile strip, which was intended for the main entrance of a retail unit that... And we would be keeping the entrance in the exact same spot that was originally planned here as well as keeping the, the concrete pavement that's there. Removing only minimal necessary to construct the building. That would be the Nordstrom's Rack as an example of the exterior rendering. Just jump back. We're not planning for any changes out along the front. No parking changes, no drive lanes, no none of that. Again, it was already designed and intended for a retail location at this point. So we're just, again, simply infilling. That's pretty much it. I mean, it's, I think it's pretty straightforward. We're just infilling an empty spot, so.
Yeah, one thing I did notice is, so on the design, the outside of the building, on the light, on the signage, you have, it says that the, that is LED lit, the sign there, which now my question to you, it can't, in the town of Plymouth, you can't have an internally lit sign. It can be a halo or lit off to the side. So question, is that, by what I read there, it seems to me it's saying it's internally lit.
No, it would be either a halo or externally lit. That's a separate item that the tenant and we're working with, and it'll be within all regulations and will be applied for separately for signage approval. So this is, this is conceptual at this point in time, working with Nordstrom's, but we've already had conversations with them that the signage will be in compliance with the town.
Okay, because I just noticed that. I mean, the rest, I mean, the footprint of the building and everything was okay back at, when we okayed Colony. So that's, you know, it's, yeah, it's more of the building, yeah.
No questions.
Okay. I await the board. Have you anything else you would like to add?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Jason? I await the board's pleasure.
I make a motion that regarding case forty-one fifty-three, which is special permit three-one-eight-two, that condition number one is satisfied.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, I have a motion by Peter and a second by Michael. This has been satisfied, the condition has been satisfied. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Build your building.
Thank you very much.
You betcha.
Have a great evening.
All right, the next case we're doing is case number four oh four-two, John Sullivan, Ten Massa Soyet Ave. Good evening. For the record.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Anderson with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, and I am here tonight on behalf of the property owners of Ten Massa Soyet Ave, John and Sheila Hickey Sullivan. So a little backstory on this one. We were before you in December of twenty twenty-one, and we issued a special permit for a single-family home renovation project that included a small addition within the minimum required side setback as well as a portion of a detached garage also within that side setback in which we unanimously received a waiver on that. Fast forward a few years later, a bit of an unfortunate circumstance happened. Construction on the project was started, and as they were doing some interior demolition for the renovation project, essentially, it was determined that the existing structure was completely structurally unsuitable, the foundation. Many portions of the existing structure would not meet current building codes. Inspection Services was called out with the site contractor, kind of agreed with all that. So we're basically here before you tonight to request abandonment of that existing special permit. Our plan is to go back to the drawing board with a full tear-down rebuild, and we're gonna aim to move the building footprint into conformity with current zoning requirements and submit with a new residential zoning permit. So we were kind of guided by the town to, to go this way, just to get a clean bill of health that we are seeking to withdraw that existing special permit and go the next avenue to do it in conformity with the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So I, I think in this case, and I know it might sound a bit unusual, because this special permit was recorded, we felt that it was important for there to be a formal withdrawal so that if anyone researched the property, they could see the rationale behind what happened and how the structure was built. Because again, it was, it was a bit convoluted with the, with the change midstream. So this is, I think, the neatest and cleanest way for the applicant to resolve things and move forward.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty nomad kind of situation. There's not much in this case that's gonna come out of it. Cleaning up the paperwork.
I was wondering about that, Jason, because I don't think I've ever remembered doing such a thing.
I, neither have I, but it makes sense.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
It cleans up...
We've never had to do it.
A twenty-five-year from now, what the hell is this? You know, it, it really does. It sets things in motion. A question, I do have a question for Jason, though. Well, so on this, with the abandonment, normally when we turn something down, they can't go back for two years. That wouldn't exist, or should we add the word without prejudice, Casey Hassel?
That, that's a valid question. I don't know that, I don't know that there's any harm in adding that to the, to the vote. But I don't think there's any intention from the applicant to come back in that if anything, any relief would be so significantly different because the structure's gone now. It's not in the same place. And so, again, I think a valid argument or inclusion in the, in the vote, but not likely to be that, that important here.
So would you like to see it in there in case they have to, or?
Again, I, I don't think it's relevant.
Okay.
If the applicant would like to request it, that's up to them.
I would prefer to leave it open, the capability for us to come back. So, you know, there is the detached garage portion of the project that, you know, was approved under that initial special permit. We're kind of putting that on the side table for now because, you know, right now we just have a demolished house and the applicant really wants to get moving with that portion, which we're gonna apply for under current zoning regulations. You know, we haven't kind of ironed out all those details yet, but it is a possibility that we come back, ask for that same detached garage location, which did receive relief on, but we just haven't got there yet. They really just want to move forward with the house at this point.
In my opinion, if we, we can protect the home in a biad, in two words, without prejudice. Without prejudice, right.
And it doesn't, doesn't really change anything. It's just a little more adequate explanation.
I agree.
You think you can do that? Well, I mean, the vote's to acknowledge abandonment. I don't know why that, you would put without prejudice.
Because I don't know if the two-year applies. We, we're not sure, and so this way, whether it does or it doesn't, it doesn't. Right, exactly.
Okay.
All right, so we are... I'm waiting for a moment. So I'm gonna make a motion that case number, let's see, where's it, four oh four-two, that we acknowledge the, the abandonment and that, without prejudice. Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Michael and a second from Kevin to discontinue the permit for case four oh four-two, without prejudice. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And we have one more. Case forty-one thirty-six, Atlantic Design Engineers, two twenty-seven Cherry Street Investments.
Good evening.
Your name, please.
My name is Benjamin King. I'm with Atlantic Design Engineers, and I'll be representing the applicant tonight, Chris King, for his boat storage warehouse located at two twenty-seven Cherry Street. So just a brief recap. The applicant's proposing an eighty thousand square foot boat storage warehouse. We were before you guys in November, where the special permit was approved with the conditions, and we were told to informally appear before you to show that the conditions have been satisfied. This is just a site layout plan for reference here. So this is the condition one that we're gonna be hopefully satisfying tonight. Comments raised by the Department of Public Works are to be addressed to the Satisfaction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. When we were before you guys in November, we had a basically clean DPW memo with only two comments that were left partially satisfied. The first being general comment four, which is DPW was requesting additional soil testing be done in the slope area to confirm that no contamination exists. Since the time of the last hearing, the applicant has had the soil testing done, and we have sent over the results to the DPW, and they have reviewed, and they are satisfied with the results. The second one is a drainage comment where the DPW would like to see stormwater improvements on the adjacent lot. The applicant's proposing to utilize a portion of the budding property, which is an existing automobile salvage yard, and the town would like to see stormwater improvements there to make sure that there is some kind of water quality improvement up there. We've, the DPW has reviewed and approved the two stormwater improvements that we've sent them. Take a look at one here. In this one, we're doing two four bays, a rain garden, a subsurface infiltration system. Once again, we've been in contact with the DPW, and we've went over this with them. They seem very happy with this design. And then the eastern discharge point here, we have a catch basin going to a water quality unit, going to a subsurface system. Again, we've worked with them on this, and, and they are satisfied with this. The second condition that we're looking to hopefully satisfy tonight would be the, last time we were before the board, we were asked to have an amended landscape plan done for both aesthetics and stabilization purposes. I believe you guys have received a copy of that as well, but if not, we also have a plan right here showing some beefed-up plantings in that slope area along here. All the plantings will also be native species per the conditions set forth. Any other questions?
Questions?
So I guess one of my questions, you were into just satisfying condition one, and you're going to try to satisfy condition three now also, the landscaping?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you anything else you would like to add?
No, sir.
Yeah, just real quick, jumping in, Happy St. Patrick's Day. Rob Dambrosa for the record. Dambrosa Law here in Plymouth. Just for the purpose of Denise in the letter, I think we also want to hit condition eight. That was just one of the open conditions. It kind of dovetails with condition three, I think, which talked about landscaping. So again, beefed-up landscaping is three, native species is eight, DPW is one. So if we could just, assuming you are satisfied, we'd just like to make sure all three of those are reflected in whatever you guys vote on tonight, please. Thank you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Go on, motion? Motion? I make a motion that, regarding case 4136, Atlantic Design Engineers, Cherry Street Investments, that we approve, that conditions one, three, and eight have been satisfied. One, three, eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Connor and a second by Mr. Leary to approve case 4136, that they have met conditions number one, three, and eight. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some minutes for... I believe the last meeting. The minutes for January the 6th.
Pretty good to me.
Any additions, deletions, corrections?
Move to approve.
What did you say? Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
All in favor. Yes.
It's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings this meeting to a conclusion. Thank you very much. Good night.